Okay, here we go. I hope. Tonight is January twenty first, two thousand twenty five. Happy New Year, everybody. It's three minutes past seven. And tonight, we have. We're going to call the meeting to order and we're going to. Identify all of the board members, starting with Samantha, our new town planner.
I'm Sam Picas with North Star Planning, also contract planner for Town of Arundel.
Marty Kane.
Paul Green.
James Lowry.
Tom McGinn.
Susan Robb. I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda, agenda.
Make a motion, approve the agenda?
A second.
Yay.
Okay, Paul has. Approved the agenda and Marty has seconded. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. And I'd like the approval of the minutes, please, for January seventh, two thousand twenty five.
I'll make a motion, approve the minutes of January seventh as written.
I'll second that.
So the minutes have been seconded. Are there any objections?
I do have a question.
Yep. Okay.
Looking for where we, it has all the conditions of approval.
Yep.
And finding the facts. It doesn't say, before that, it has, that I moved to accept the application as complete.
This is on Bentley?
Yes. But it doesn't say anywhere.
Ah, yeah, it does. If you look at right before the approval, it says, motion, Mr. McGinn moved to accept the application as complete, Mr. Shapiro seconds.
But that was to make, to accept it as complete, not to approve. Of the application.
Ah, okay.
So I was looking for that. I don't.
I thought we should approve the application.
And usually.
Paul?
I don't, there is, yeah, there wasn't a second motion to it.
We never did that.
Because we never voted on that first one until after all the other stuff.
Okay.
Usually we will do.
I know, but.
We'll prove it.
Look at the video.
Okay.
Honest, Tommy.
So we'll approve the minutes of the possible amendment. And we'll check the video.
Oh, you'd have to go back.
Make any appropriate changes.
You'd have to go back and redo the issue because there was no vote on it.
That's the way. Well, I thought we approved it, but.
Well, the minutes I agree with. But.
Well, so let's approve the minutes as written and if there are any edits, we'll make them for the next meeting.
Okay.
As that sounds. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to public comment. And public comment is basically for those who have come to the meeting but are not involved in any of the matters before the board. So is there anyone here who is not involved in the two matters that we have before us? If not, hearing none, then we'll close public comment and move along. So tonight. We have a pending business, Raptor Falls, and we have a new application, Log Cabin Land LLC Houston and Company. So we'll do pending business first. Welcome, you guys. Pending business is Raptor Falls LLC site plan. The proposal is to expand an existing business located at nineteen twelve Portland Road on Tax Map fifteen lot twelve in the B I zone. The expansion consists of a bumper boat pond, climbing walls and an outdoor patio with seating areas as well as the associated parking area. The owner of the property is Raptor Falls LLC. The applicants are Clifford and Bree Gatauski. And the applicant's engineer is Craig Burgess, P E of Acorn Engineering. So Craig or. Cliff or Bree? Take it away.
I don't have it online.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Craig Burgess. I'm with Acorn Engineering and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Raptor Falls LLC. Cliff and his wife Bree are here with me tonight. So if you have any specific questions, they're around to answer those. As mentioned, the project involves the construction of a new bumper boat pool. Which will be able to accommodate twelve bumper boats. There'll be two climbing walls on like a trailer, so they can actually be kind of like wheeled. Backed in over here. So there'll be two climbing walls in this location. And then to the immediate north of between the two, there'll be like a small little patio area for people to eat their snacks or lunches. And the project also involves the expansion of this parking area to the north. That parking area will be for twenty nine two parking spaces. But in doing so, we're also displacing four there. So the net gain is actually twenty five. So the overall amount of parking areas to serve both the existing eighteen hole miniature golf and. The new bumper boat and climbing trailer is seventy seven total parking spaces. This plan that's before you tonight does differ a little bit from. From what you saw back in August. At that time. The project was much bigger. There was actually another building. There was another eighteen hole miniature golf course that was proposed. And since then, Cliff and Bree have decided just to scale it back and to just install, just construct the new bumper boat pool in the climbing wall. So. So the overall amount of disturbance in impervious area is actually much less than what was originally proposed back in August. So with the, with the total construction. The new impervious across the entire site is just under forty thousand square feet. The, the total new impervious area, and I put together a graphic here to show that. Because the site was actually developed before Cliff and Bree became involved. And there was some level of impervious. And because that impervious area was created before two thousand and six. Main D E P does allow some grandfathering so that you don't actually have to count the full impervious that was already there before two thousand and six. So in, in the grandfathering of that impervious area and then adding all the new impervious area that's above and beyond. The new impervious actually is, is just, it's just under forty thousand square feet. So because a full new acre of impervious area is not being created, a main D E P stormwater law permit is not required in this case. However, a main D E P storm, stormwater permit by rule is. And that's because we're proposing more than an acre of overall, just overall disturbance. So we did go ahead and we submitted a main D E P stormwater permit by rule. Two weeks ago, and the turnaround time on that is about fourteen days. So we should be hearing back from D E P. Anytime now. And when D E P looks at a stormwater permit by rule, they're just looking at making sure that the appropriate stormwater. And erosion controls are in place to control erosion sedimentation across the site. And for this site, it's actually very important to control erosion because it is on a hillside. And the runoff is generally directed in this way. So it's very important to the project to be able to control erosion and certainly with, with stormwater. For this project. And, and a stormwater management, a full stormwater management report was submitted with the application. The original design included a small little detention basin right about in this area. So a majority of the site, the golf, the miniature golf course, the building, the parking area. Brained in like a roadside ditch to go to this detention pond. Well, now because we're increasing the amount of impervious area on the site, the amount of runoff is increasing. So we're trying to scale back. The peak rates of flow from the site. And in doing that, we had to actually increase the side of the size of that detention basin. But it worked out pretty well because right now there's a, an outlet control structure that's installed. Cliff and Bree have already spent a lot of money on, on this detention basin. So we tried to keep a lot of those existing systems in place. But just enlarge the amount of detention that's behind it. So we're actually increasing the size of that detention pond here. There are some other stormwater controls here. There's, there's under drain like drip edge. So all the runoff coming out across this area will get into a stone drip edge. Ultimately, it gets into an existing pipe system which goes to the pond. And likewise with the new parking area, there's a combination of. Catch basin, storm drain pipe and under drain pipe, which brings all the stormwater back to here. To create that, the stormwater controls, we did put, we did design a ditch that goes along. The property line on this side. Although all the impervious area is staying just north of the twenty five foot structure setback. We do have some grading for construction of that ditch within twenty five feet of that property line, and there will be some tree removal there. And you probably noticed in your application packet that we included a waiver for a landscape plan. At this time, we're not proposing any additional plantings or trees for buffering. There is, there is at least a thirty foot wooded buffer here along Fritz's Lane, but we're not proposing any trees in this location at this time. There was landscaping proposed as part of the original project. Along Route one here, and then there's some trees scattered throughout the site. At this time, we're only. The, the proposed improvements are only requiring the removal of some of these trees. Actually, they're in this spot here. We're gonna try to protect those trees and possibly replant them when the, when the project is done. But because there was already an elaborate landscape plan. That was done back in two thousand and eighteen. It's already in along Route one. At this time, we're not, we didn't put together a new landscape plan, which is why we're asking for a. A waiver from that standard. We did get a chance to review the planner's memo and, and we believe the, the comments were relatively minor in, in nature. One of the comments that was brought up was the lighting plan. The, the new parking area does propose four new light poles. And there was just some very, very minor light trespass along this property line. So. Acorn Engineering is working with the lighting designer. We're gonna shift the light poles here. We're just gonna shift them about like. Ten feet or so to the north just to get that light trespass, so it doesn't go beyond the property line. And then the impervious area was brought up. And I think I've already touched upon that. And one of the other minor comments was just to clarify the amount of parking. Which I also discussed, there's, there'll be seventy seven total. I did notice the reason for some confusion. There was just a slight typo. In my, in my parking memo that I provided. So there will be seventy seven total parking spaces to serve the facility. So. With that said, I'd open it up to the board for any, any comments that you may have. Thank you.
On my mic, seems like you have adequate, but would you base it? That, was there a formula that you based it on?
No and yes. I did provide a parking memo at the end of the, there's like a parking and traffic section. It's section N. And it was at the very back of section M. I did, I, I understood that. Trying to base the parking on the minimum town standard was hard because there is really no clear cut.
Like this.
Use.
Yeah.
And I did notice that the prior application did base it on a, a golf course use. But when you go through and, and, and look at the definitions of golf courses, specifically excludes miniature golf courses. So the amount of parking was based more or less on conversations with Cliff and Bree about what works out there. And right now, there's a total of about fifty, fifty-two parking spaces. And for the most part, that's not full. There have been a couple of days where it has been full, but for the most part, there's, there's plenty of parking out there. And with the additional two uses added, we thought the additional twenty, Cliff and Bree. Strongly thought that the additional twenty-five parking spaces would be more than enough to satisfy their parking need.
And I, I agree with you. I just didn't know if there was formula to go by. Usually we'll have some type of formula, square footage or whatever. Or number of employees, but in this case.
That in this memo.
Yeah.
Recreation of a facility. Because if you go square footage, it doesn't accurately reflect.
Right.
Their use of the property.
Just want to make sure that, that we're, we're covered. And I, it seems like the, the new use won't be. Drawn, you, you couldn't have twenty-five vehicles probably just for the, for the bumper cars. So you, you more than increased.
I, what, what, what we found by working with Castle Golf is that. When people come to the site, they're likely, they're gonna park and they're gonna likely use all three facilities.
Out there. Okay, well, that, so I, I don't really have a concern on, on that. So it's good. And, and while I have the.
I got a question for you.
Go ahead.
All right, now, I'm in the past. Where you were first beginning being new spot and everything else, we had a lot of overflow. We had a park on Route one, so on the co-foot. On your busiest day, what would you say the total number? That you ran short on in the parking spot that you have existing now? How many vehicles roughly, ballpark? How much did you get there?
Five or six at most. The other, and that, that actually hasn't happened for the last three years or so. What happened was when we opened in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. That was when nobody could travel and we had, I mean, we, we were definitely over capacity for sure. We were averaging about forty-eight thousand people a year were going through the course. Now that COVID's over and everybody's traveling freely again, things are kind of like back to normal. We're averaging between thirty-five and forty thousand a year. The last couple of years, we've, we've. The parking lot has been more than adequate. We've had extra spaces every year since COVID.
Okay, because I would just wonder if, I mean, if you even with your. Spots that you have there, your new parking spots with the old parking spots. If you think we're gonna have an overrun again, that's what I'm getting at. Particularly with the new. Facilities that you're putting in. If you're gonna have enough parking, that's bottom line.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we're not, having the new facilities isn't drawing more people to the attraction. It's just the people that are showing up at the attraction are staying a little bit longer.
Yeah.
So.
Of course, when at first you started, you didn't have ice cream and everything else too.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, you got people coming in for this, people coming in for that, I mean. Which is good to keep you all busy. I mean, but I'm just thinking overall. You know, because you might have people coming from across the street that after they're playing their discus golf. Instead of the miniature golf. They want the ice cream goodies on that, on top of that, you know?
That's possible. I, I.
You know, it's hard to get good ice cream. That's what I'm trying to say.
It is. And the Shaker Pond is nice ice cream.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I would have a hard time speaking to that. I, I don't.
Which is new, do you leave room? On the existing property to put in more? Future activities? Or are you coming down to about the maximum that you can expand?
There's, I mean, we have seven and a half acres. So theoretically, I mean, we could eventually put a whole theme park in there, but. The re, part of the reason why we pared down this project, you know, because originally we were gonna put another building in and. You know, move our parking area completely and have another eighteen holes. It's just Bree and I and our employees and we.
You only have too many hands.
We don't want it to turn into something that we start to dislike. We, we enjoy it now and it's manageable and enjoyable and.
Well, you want to keep playing. You play every day.
We want to play every day.
That's the name.
Yeah.
Cliff, I have a question. Will your septic system be able to handle the increased traffic? Because I think you used the existing when you initially opened, or did you put a whole new septic system in?
We've put a whole new septic system in and. Even with us running at max capacity those first two years with COVID. We didn't have the system pumped. It didn't need to be pumped in four years. And, and to the point you were saying, you know, with the increased traffic. It won't really, we're not anticipating increased traffic. We're just anticipating the traffic that we have. It's gonna be visiting longer to do the other attraction.
Right, but if people stay longer in the facility, they're gonna use the restrooms more often. So. It's kind of a wash between either more traffic or people staying longer and using the facility. So.
You, you guys kind of handled that.
So it was a new septic system when the project was built in two thousand and nineteen. And as part of this project, I reached out to the soil evaluator that did that septic design. We, we received all the, the water district records for the property since it opened. And we, we went through those water records and we found that they were, they were still well below. What the system was designed for. However, recognizing that there's potentially. People staying longer, we, as part of the application, section M. We did provide a, an expansion design should the systems start to become overwhelmed. So there, there was, there was an expansion design that was part of the application. Based upon, based upon the, the new uses that were being, are being built.
So you'll monitor, you have to self-monitor that, or is there a municipal? Facility or governing agency that makes sure that you have adequate septic? For the amount of traffic that you have? I'm not sure who polices that. Is, is that self-policed? Jane, do you know or?
Probably, I mean, fall under the code office. You know, from a, from an enforcement standpoint, if there were complaints on the site of odor or smell or, or effluent. Anything along those lines of the surface, you know, a complaint could be made to the code office to go over and.
Take a look.
Take a look, assess it.
And I think that's what the septic designer was thinking too. If the system starts to fail, I think. You'll start to smell and at that point, there's already a design in place for the expansion of that disposal field.
Thank you.
I'm sure that's the last thing you'd want, yeah, for your business.
Yeah, really.
Doesn't go good with the ice cream.
I think our Google rating would start to take a little dip there.
I could die. I have one more question. Are you only gonna have one, a ticket entrance and one ticket exit? So in other words, people are gonna come all the way around to the back parking lot? And then walk all the way back to enter at your initial entrance? Okay.
Did you?
Uh, yes.
Last, last time you guys were in here, some of your neighbors were worried about. The noise and the buffering and all that. I understand you're not going back as far. But if you're not gonna, or if you're gonna take out some of the buffering on the side where their access road is. Is, is there a plan to? Put it back, I guess, after you put the ditch in? Or put it on the other side of the ditch or something?
Right, yeah, right now.
I know they've, you're counting their buffering, but you really can't, right? By ordinance, you're supposed to have your own buffering. Am I wrong there, guys? Or am I missing something?
That's a good point.
So. You know, I mean, the, the whole idea is set up where they've got thirty and you've got thirty and the buffering happens there.
It's, it's, yeah.
I'm just thinking back of, you know, they were a little upset with some of the noise behind, and I know that shouldn't be a problem now because you're not going back. You've got two hundred feet back. But. I'm a little concerned to be honest with you that you're taking some of the buffering out on site. And how much of a pain would it be? Do you have the room to put it back after you put the ditch?
Yeah, there's, there's a ditch coming through here. So if the boards saw it and it would be needed. We could certainly put some, some evergreens there to create a good, better visual buffer.
All right, I, I think you'd be better off, to be honest with you. That'll keep you within the ordinance to keep, you know, it keeps it legal with the neighbors and. So I, I would suggest you go back and do that. I, I got nothing else.
Nothing else? Anybody? Jeremy?
Yeah, you're gonna have a lot of blasting put in your new parking lot. Now, when you're, from your parking lot going. Backwards, how much distance is there so that you have headlights? Will it be broadcasting onto neighbors in the back, or are you gonna have enough? Buffer, we'll call it again, either rock ledge or trees or whatever.
The elevation behind the parking lot goes right up. It's.
Okay, then it's a little, they won't. Broadcast backwards to.
Yeah, it goes about eight foot cut or so along back here. Then it's also. Still a pretty good substantial buffer between that, where the tree clearing is and that, that property to the ridge.
Um, so I have two questions. I, they come in pairs for, I don't know why, but they do. One is, have you encroached at all on any of the setbacks, or do you still meet all of the initial setback requirements? So none of that has changed in terms?
As far as I understand it. This building, which didn't meet the setback standards, that was grandfathered. That was an existing building. Which, and that was brought up as part of the original application, but the rest of the site meets, as far as I understand, all the setback standards of the ordinance.
Okay, so that was my first question. My second is, when are you hoping to get started on all of this? Is it time for spring?
So we're trying, so they're trying to get the project built before the, the season starts.
Okay. Um.
Two things in the morning there.
First question.
It looks more.
Here's that, the, the.
Hold on one second, Marty. Just wait one second.
It appears just looking at the plan, the front sort of side corner of the existing parking lot is. Closer to the lottery line than any of the proposed gravel on there. So.
On, I mean, the second, second parking.
The existing is closer than the proposed.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I, you know, I wasn't sure there for a second.
Dumpster enclosure?
So.
The dumpster in the corner of the parking lot.
So I have a question for the board. And that is, since this plan is so scaled back. And we're not discussing the placement of a new building and other items that were on your initial agenda. This basically doesn't change. You know. It does change how they're using the lot, but it doesn't appreciably change their footprint. And I just wonder, I mean, we've been out there a couple of times. Whether this actually warrants a sidewalk. I know Rich wanted us to have one, but in terms of. Using your envelope, your building envelope and adding the parking lot in the back. That's really minimal in terms of. The way in which you rearranged your use of the property. So I'm open to a sidewalk, whether permitting, not right now. And or waiving a sidewalk given the scaled back nature of the project.
I don't think we should waive sidewalk. Under protocol.
All right.
We can get.
Anybody else?
Not hitting on this case, but the fact is, if we don't, we miss something, but we weren't there. Our, our procedure is always to understand walk and, and we should maintain that.
So I guess, Marty, I was thinking in the. In an effort to be as expedient as possible, so we don't hold them up that much. Given the fact that the weather is such and we're not gonna be walking around either in the parking lot or on the ledge. Whether or not there were. What benign enough changes that. Uh, what benign enough changes that we could assume from our initial sidewalks? Um, that we could uh help them move this project along rather than waiting till spring. But I'm uh, I will go with whatever the decisions the board are uh makes, so.
What the question is, we asked when they were planning on starting.
I just did. I just did in the spring.
Yeah, but I mean.
So.
They didn't wanna have it ready for the spring.
Yeah.
To start in the spring. To start in the spring.
Yeah.
Yeah, open in the spring.
Yeah, but you have to, it's gonna take time to develop all this.
Right. Anybody else? Comments, questions, criticisms, whatever?
Well, I I tend to agree with Marty on this one. He's just, it's, it is. I don't know, there's about an acre of of uh, of a project going on, so it's, so it's a pretty good size, not just. If five parking spots, it's, I think, um, I'd like to take a look at. The slope and flow of the, of wetlands. I know, won't be able to see much of the snow on the ground, but. At least you get a sense of it, just in case there are surprises that we can't see on paper.
Okay, so all those in favor of a sidewalk?
I think you hit a motion, right?
Yeah. Will someone make a motion?
Pose a time for the sidewalk and make it all in one motion.
Okay, wow, good question.
What are you gonna use for payment?
It's just gonna be a compacted gravel, similar to what's out there today.
So the next meeting is February the fourth.
So we'd wanna do it um before the fourth?
Yes.
Or on the fourth, so that we can schedule a public hearing that day too?
You're not gonna be able to do it before the meeting is not confirmed yet.
Yeah, on the, on the Tuesday. I think it would have to be on, on a weekend or.
So how about Sa- uh Saturday the first?
That would work for me.
Does that work? Everybody?
Yeah. Should be a fairly. Does it work, does it work for you guys?
Um, somebody should.
No.
Craig's unavailable that day. You're unavailable?
I'm, I'm taking a little mini winter vacation that weekend.
Cliff and Bree, are you guys available?
I could.
Just for a sidewalk, just for us to come out and take a look. February first?
For a sidewalk.
Just for a sidewalk?
We're just asking if we can be there.
As long as I can explain what's on the drawing.
Yeah.
Um, someone from Acorn Engineering can be there. I don't wanna hold it up in any way, so. Um, Cliff and Bree can't make it, but I can make sure that someone from Acorn Engineering is.
Uh, well. How about the twenty-fifth, if this, this Saturday?
I can't do it the twenty-fifth, but you guys, we just need three, so.
Yeah, but we're gonna also have to have markers out wherever.
Yeah. Right.
I mean, uh.
How's the weather look?
It'll be cold through part of the week, but I don't know. It's gonna be cold.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The first word, I can make it, we can make it work.
I, I can do the twenty-fifth or I can do the first.
I would, I would say, um. I would suggest that first gives them a little bit of time to.
Yeah.
Do, try and get something, even though, you know, flag in the snow or whatever, just to mark the corner. I think, I think the biggest. Area would be right along that side, property line. You know, by Fritz's lean.
Right.
To really understand where the limit of the parking area would be.
And.
Right up along through there, you know.
Yeah, beauty of the sidewalk tours allows the neighbors, because they get notified. And that, you gotta give them time to notify people. It lets the neighbors get notified. If they wanna come to the sidewalk, you can explain a lot of things there and make a lot of things go away, so.
That's fair, fair enough.
So I propose that we hold a sidewalk. February first, nine o'clock.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Yep.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so.
Weather permitting.
Weather, obviously, yes, weather permitting, so.
If, I could, uh just as far, there, there was the uh request for, to waive the landscaping. Can I just bring that issue?
Well, I think after we take, we have our sidewalk.
Okay.
Uh, we can decide whether or not we wanna waive it based on what we see and how much.
That probably makes sense, okay.
Landscape has been denuded and whether or not they need to replant.
But I think you've already, already gotten some feedback.
Yeah.
Concerned with not.
If the board really feels strongly about adding landscaping there, then that, that landscaping waiver would go away.
Right, so we'll, we'll see it when we go out on the first.
Good.
And then what we'll do is we have a meeting on the fourth and uh we can sc- schedule a public hearing then. And then, how, Sam, how much time do you need for a public hearing? For two weeks? Or to post, um then there's a public hearing?
Though, the submission timeline is two weeks and they, they tell us to send the notice. Um, I think, as far as I know, um they would have. The first initial meeting like today and then do the public hearing at the next meeting. Um, I think that's.
Yeah, so we can have, we can schedule a public meeting.
So I think procedurally, we probably should have done this first before we did the sidewalk, before we got it going. And we should review the application, deem it complete.
Because we remember.
Well, Rich was very specific when he left the instructions on his way to Connecticut and he said, um. If you wanna do a sidewalk and he felt that we should. Um, and even though I respectfully disagreed, and he said after that. We would reconvene at the next meeting and determine whether or not the application was complete.
Correct.
And uh whether or not we were gonna have a schedule of public hearing then.
In an effort to keep these guys from having to come back another time later in February. I would suggest, I would propose we walk through, make a determination of completeness or not.
Correct.
And then, if we find it complete, we can work to schedule a public hearing and they can. Potentially get through this in two meetings instead of three.
I'm all for expediting the process, so Jamie, do you? So if we should reopen what we were gonna vote on, we, well. So we're all set there.
Right.
Okay.
Actually, you, you gotta determine whether or not the application is complete.
Okay.
I'd like to make uh the motion right away that it, we deem it complete. I think everything we, that we need is. Is already in hand. It's very thorough.
We don't know until we take the sidewalk.
It helps, it's, it's regardless of what we see at the sidewalk, we still, we still have all of the documents that we need.
Seeing the application, Marty, we're just.
We can still ask for more information. If we see something at the sidewalk that we feel is. Warrants further review, we can still ask for more information. We don't need to, this isn't, you know, or or revisions to the information. So that doesn't mean that everything in here is one hundred percent accurate. It just means they've met that threshold of submission requirements.
The, the only thing I think.
We're going out of routine.
The, the only thing that there might maybe missing is, is the DEP, well, permit. You said you, wha- whatever it was you, you uh applied for and it should be coming in.
We should have that by next, so.
We still need to have the public hearing and then the final acceptance. You're just deeming the application's complete. They've given enough, enough information.
Got a whole package here. There's a very thorough, as far as I'm concerned.
Application, you're just finding it.
Deeming that their application's complete and then you're finalizing the stuff we gotta go through.
I understand that.
Okay, go with that.
Okay.
So there's my motion up there.
So I made a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion.
All those in favor of finding the application complete?
I.
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Nope.
Alright, the application is complete, so.
With that, I propose to hold a sidewalk, I mean, I'm not a pub- a public hearing. At our June. February fourth meeting.
Not June.
Yes.
Right, yeah, yeah, looking forward to warm weather. I'll second that.
All those in favor, um. Well, we've already approved the sidewalk on the first.
Public hearing.
But a public hearing on the fourth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, you will have a public hearing on the fourth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions, comments?
So, just, just to make sure, alright, you guys have submitted two waivers. One, you're gonna probably pull back on the landscaping, right?
Yes.
And you don't know yet.
What's that? Oh, well, that's right. We can do, we can talk more at the, at the sidewalk.
Right.
And then, we'll also review the site distance when they request.
Right, that's what I was thinking, that we would take care of that after we've opened on the sidewalk. Um, anything else, guys?
We could that night, but if, if the things that come, come up, it might take longer. Yeah.
And your rebutters may come, I mean, you know. I don't know what's gonna transpire on the fourth, probably nothing, but in the event that it does, then we'll address it then. Um, and if not, um, you know, we'll move right along. Alright, thank you very much. Very exciting.
Thank you guys.
I think by the time I'm here ten years, I'll probably get the hang of this, but anyway, thank you, Jamie.
No, sorry to interject your, with, with your uh. Flated instructions, but I don't, we get the feeling that people felt this is, you know, we're debating on having a sidewalk.
Well, I, you know, I wanna move it along, you know, my intention is to always expedite things if we can. Um, okay.
So one of our workshops, we're really on go through, lay out the steps, because it seems to be a lot of confusion between. The process of accepting the application as a complete versus the acceptance of.
Right.
Good idea. Would be nice to have just the, all of our steps.
Uh. Yes, because we don't always follow the steps in the same order. Okay. Um, new business. Ladies and gentlemen, or lady and gentleman. Uh, new business is Log Cabin Land LLC Houston and Company Site Plan Application. Uh, the proposal to add a twenty-four by one hundred foot uh greenhouse to produce sea salt. By solar evaporation for the main salt farm. Property is at two twenty-six Log Cabin Road, tax map, tax map thirty-one, lot three A. In the R three zone. The property owner is Log Cabin Land LLC. And the applicant is Sarah, is that correct?
Yep.
And Ganel or Janelle, uh Houston, uh their design consultant is John Icelander.
And this is, this is not John.
Okay.
Uh, this is Chris Carey, a partner of the main salt farm.
Okay, um, take it away.
Yeah, I guess, um, well, uh, guys. Uh, I've probably seen in application, we're proposing the addition of a uh twenty-four by hundred foot greenhouse on the northern side of. Um, our current plot on two twenty-six Log Cabin. Um, currently, I don't know how familiar you are with the property, Houston and Company, two twenty-six. We've been. Um, since ninety-five, we've had a fine furniture, have some wood shop there. Um, we've been in a couple of times with different revisions to the property. Um, I purchased the, um, Janelle and I, my wife and I purchased the property from my, my dad, um. And mom in the beginning of the year, um, and uh, and so we're looking to. Uh, yeah, put up a greenhouse to do solar evapor- evaporated sea salt.
Okay, well, it's a, it's a big change from making furniture.
It is, and it's not, we're, we're not shifting business. Um, we're proposing that this would be in addition to the site. Um, the salt would be, the sea uh salt water would be evaporated there and then taken off site to be um. Manufactured or packaged or, um, so Houston and Company, um. Will, will, will stay there, um, as it stands, um, and so it's not a shift in business. Um, it's really just the addition of that greenhouse.
Questions, anybody?
Yeah, how much water do you need to get installed out of?
Yep, I'll let, I'll let these guys into that.
And sort of to expand on Marty's question, can you just walk through the whole process?
Yeah.
Including that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we would probably order um around fifteen hundred gallons at a time. And those would go directly into uh pans or tables that would be used in the evaporation. The nice thing about the greenhouse is it only requires you to kind of mow the field grass down to the dirt and then you can put. Landscaping cloth essentially down as the base. And then you can use, uh, you can level the tables and pans inside a greenhouse, so you don't have to actually excavate and level the land at all. Um, so it's really, the, the process is pretty simple. You need three bays essentially to do the evaporation that starts with. Bulk evaporation to do the uh primary volume reduction. Then you do a secondary evaporation that gets you to a, a final salinity about, uh, just before the salt starts to precipitate. And then you pump the, to the third stage, which is where the salt uh finally forms and then you allow the kind of salt to be raked, piled and dried. So there's no lighting required, there's no um electricity required, it's all done passively, so it's just a traditional. Uh, I think they call it Gothic style greenhouse that you see, you see next door at Finkelpod. Um, and it's done all internal to the, the, the greenhouse itself. Additionally, the delivery trucks that come in, essentially a um, uh heating oil type vehicle. Would pull onto existing roadway. We would use hoses to get the water into the greenhouse, so we don't actually have to. Add any um roads or, or, or driving space, so to speak, driveway space. And just for frame of reference, the amount of water, how many gallons is it? About fifteen hundred to two thousand per delivery, depending on the final. In like, in an oil truck, per se, or like a delivery oil truck, is that relatively the same? Yeah, about twenty-five hundred. About twenty-five hundred, so, so fifteen to two thousand, um, and then timeframes once every two weeks? Yeah, I think it'll, depending on the performance, it'll break that, that'll, that'll, the amount of water that can be evaporated. So I would say somewhere between at the early, early stage of the season in the spring. Once a month-ish to the peak of the season, maybe twice a month. And then in addition to the oil delivery, I'm sorry, yeah, the water delivery. There would really only be one of us that would visit the site periodically to manage humidity. So it's not like we would have a customer base visiting there. We wouldn't be transacting any business on site. As Sarah mentioned, all the salt that would be produced would be taken to Pork Food Lab in um South Portland to be. Uh processed, packaged and then prepared for retail.
Roughly how much salt would, is it fifteen hundred gallons, two thousand gallons?
Where it's, the better uh s- salt pier you are, the more you can get out of it. Uh, but the hope is that that would produce around five hundred pounds, three hundred fifty to five hundred pounds.
About fifty-five, yeah, gallon.
Yeah, yeah, and the idea there is that it would dry for a little while at the last stage. And then it would go into um food safe, good plastic tote, and those would go into a standard SUV or pickup truck. And uh, and be taken off site in that manner. No, no commercial uh scale vehicles would be needed.
So what type of equipment would it take? Would, and would some of the equipment be stored on site all the time?
Uh, for uh processing. Um, it's raked by hand, and so in accordance with what the, what the state um food regulators and, and. Permitting authorities want is, you have to have, you know, a certain uh commitment to the food safety procedures, which. That includes footwear, changes of clothes and kind of an area where that can take place at the front of the greenhouse. Um, then you don't need anything other than hand tools really, um, plastic or rubber rakes. And then we would be using a small. we would be using a small DC pump that would have its own little solar panel that would kind of attach to a battery and that runs a, a pump to transfer from bay to bay. That would be kept, that is very small, it's the size of a cooler and has a, a little thing that you want for all the charging when you need to charge it.
Like a jump pack.
Yeah, but you do, we do not need to connect to the grid for this in any way. We don't intend to light, there's no combustion machinery used to, uh, produce or transport. Uh, so there's no real noise associated with it. Um, it's, yeah, it's a very, it's intentionally a very passive resource, unintensive process. It generates good product, but it's also easy to, to manage as well.
Nice.
Yeah.
Now, how long of a, how long can you do it for, before the super cold weather comes in and not feasible, I mean, uh, you've got evaporation and humidity all year round.
Yeah, humidity is making it harder and obviously the daylight piece is, is an aspect too. April, if it's bad weather, April's tough, if April's good weather, you can start in mid-April.
Yeah, but being in a tent, you still, you're, you're away from the rain, I mean, uh, everything else.
Yeah, it, by design.
It's pretty.
Yeah, 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 and.
But you still build, build up your, your heat. And your heat is what's turning on is doing your evaporation.
Yeah, and if the child, the, the fall, it's easier to go a little bit later into the fall because the fall tends to be drier. The spring is more humid and so the evaporation's slower in the spring. Well, we'll, we'll have vents that, um, will probably have a little small solar panel attached to it and a battery that will allow it to open and close.
Yeah.
Um.
To breathe.
Yeah, to breathe and we'll, we'll have to figure out, we'll still learn when and how to, that's part of the, the artistry of it is to figure out when and how to, uh, dehumidify, um, but that's part of it, dehumidifying is part of it. And then it's pretty much April to mid-October and then you start to have a hard time producing.
So have you done this before?
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm saying you have to learn to, you sounded almost like this was your first venture. I mean, uh, by you saying it, of making it, I mean, uh, first in a first venture, that dislocation.
First, first time at this location, if you do want the two minutes on the company's history, is that helpful?
Sure. Yeah.
So the two minutes on the company's history is that we founded in twenty fifteen. And we began producing in Cape Elizabeth at, uh, Jordan's Farm and used one of their greenhouses, very similar in size to this one. And the methodology that we use there is refined a little bit from when we made it back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Um, our goal then was to partner with and acquire, uh, the farm that mentored us or the farmer that mentored us, who was out of Machias. He passed unexpectedly in twenty twenty-four, so our, uh, pathway to scale went through the ties and him until he passed without a succession plan. And so that's when we decided we had to figure out how to find more land and he brought us to partner with, with these two folks here.
Yeah. You'll say, you said, uh, Portland area, is it more salty up there than down here? Do you get your salt water?
No.
I mean, uh, are you gonna be taking it right offshore?
No, so believe it or not, uh, Winterwood Farms, you know?
Yeah.
Or which, which, yeah.
Yeah.
So they, we, we did a, a test site up in, at, uh, in the greater Portland area just this past summer. And they were our, our supplier, as were they when we did it at, uh, Jordan's Farm. So they would actually be supplying us the same water that they would provide Hanaford or anyone selling live lobster. Um, so it's, there's a market for that for both, um, salt, uh, salty, um, hot tubs as well as salt water for selling live lobsters out of Lobster Mountain.
Where do they withdraw from?
Uh, off of Cape Portis.
Okay.
Yeah, and then they have, they have certain specifications that, you know, they're required to follow, so there's filtration and then uh, proximity to rain events and also title considerations as to when they draw the water.
And they would be responsible for doing all that. I don't know if any, I mean.
They're the vendors.
I know if you were, if you were withdrawing, if you were withdrawing water at a certain amount from a water bottle.
Anywhere, right.
You'd need a DEP permit, that's part of one of our criteria, typically it's like for wetlands and stormwater and things like that, but it's sort of somewhat falls under the same gag, but if they are the ones that are doing the withdrawal and providing you with the product, then that's on them to deal with and not solely us.
Yep.
Right.
At least that's my.
Guys that can't.
I think that's.
Guys that can't, fellas are happy the lowering.
Yeah, we're hoping to reduce sea level rise with.
Evaporation.
Fifty million. At a time, be a lot of salt. That's just the background on the, on the production side.
Interesting, it's really interesting.
It is.
Um.
I know.
Yeah.
Mini golf and, and.
This, this, we've got it all going on.
Retail space here in Oracle.
Um, so Sam, I will ask you, um, do you have any comments or anything uh, that you feel is, hasn't been addressed? And you know you have to come to town hall and deal with Sam, the town planner and get all your ducks in a row, so, uh, what's your timeline for this?
Uh, the goal is to, to start in spring, to get the greenhouse going up in spring, um, I would say April, May. Yeah, I mean, I think for us, the, the biggest, um, linchpin is just assessing the likelihood of the project being approved. And that would then allow us to start to think about the, the actual purchasing of the, um, greenhouse so that it could be on site and ready to go when the ground was thought enough for us to at least begin construction. So we don't, it's, we don't have to have construction started in a couple of weeks, I think. You know, the hope would be that we could put the greenhouse up in a week or less.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, but we'd like to purchase it so that stuff's ready to go, um, for a, I, I would say, um, of March, you know, construction timeframe.
Now, another question to ask. And this one size, uh, building that you're putting up, is there, as everything goes right, are you planning on putting more than one up? I mean, uh, so that you can increase your volume, I mean, you have enough acreage here. I mean, uh, uh, we're gonna plant several of those buildings out back there, I mean, you know, that's the crystal ball, maybe, but I mean, uh.
Yeah, yeah, in a perfect world, I'm not sure if this is, um, I think the way that we've been talking about it is a little bit of a a stopgap or a stepping stone to, um, scaling. Uh, as you said, I think there is acreage where there is a possibility, um, it's not nearly as easy as the current site because it would require some thinning out of the, of the woods behind there. Um, so it's not in the plans, uh, but again, it's hard to foresee foresee that.
So right now we have one greenhouse before us and, uh, that's the one we're gonna deal with.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, so moving right along, I do think we need us a sidewalk. And what order, gentlemen, do you think we should pursue in getting this sidewalk on the books? Cause I'm thinking the first, if we can do it, and then.
Yeah.
Paul?
If I may, I've reviewed the application and I agree with the stuff they have listed as not applicable. So I'll make the first motion of leaving the application complete.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah, so I'll second that.
So all the, those in favor of finding the application complete?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so we have found the application complete and then we.
Keep going in the administrative stuff, can I ask one more?
Of course.
So, um, are you guys proposing any kind of driveway or anything to get back to the greenhouse? You're just gonna sort of pump from the existing.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'd pump from the existing driveway parking lot.
That's already cleared field right now.
Yeah. Completely clear, flat.
They listed that.
So I, can I ask a question of, of the board? This, I, I take it is, would be an agricultural use, is that how we classify this?
I.
Sam. Well, I don't know if we want to go there.
That sounds.
That might be a little more challenging.
So, Sam, what, how, how would you see it?
So this was classified as an agricultural use, it's an amendment to their existing site plan, um, there, it's not like considered traditional agriculture, um, but that's the use category that it was most similar to in that zone.
Yeah, I don't know what else it could be.
And it's not really an intensification, it's not really an intensification of the use of the land because there's really.
No traffic.
There's no traffic, there's really nothing that's being intensified.
It's, it's just like woodworking, you gotta dry it out first before you can.
Yeah, so it's like watching salt dry. So, um.
All right, so I'll make a motion, we do the sidewalk.
Okay, I'll second that.
Same Saturday?
Saturday, the first.
February first.
Uh, so why don't we do you after?
Yeah.
Uh, the nine o'clock.
Figure it out, to be safe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shouldn't take long at all.
We'll stake out.
Nine forty-five.
All right.
Not this one, won't be long.
No.
Not this Saturday, but the following.
Yeah, so let's say nine forty-five at, uh, Houston.
That's up to.
Yeah.
Be the, the motion.
We do nine forty-five.
Yep, nine forty-five, that was, I thought I said that, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
A little late, you know, people.
Yeah, okay, now second that if it hasn't been yet.
And then what we'll do is on the fourth, I think we should schedule a public hearing.
Well, we gotta vote on this one first.
Yes, I know, but I'm just giving you a heads up, so that's next. So all those in favor of sidewalk?
Public too.
Aye, let's say well.
We. And okay.
Guys vote.
Sidewalk.
Sidewalk. Yeah. Aye, and. Can I have a motion please about a public hearing on the fourth?
I'll make a motion, we have a public hearing on the February fourth meeting.
You second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we'll see you on the first at nine forty-five and then we'll see you again at the meeting on the fourth. And we'll hold a public hearing. Samantha will do the appropriate notifications and, uh.
I'm second, I want to.
I'm sorry?
I thought, I, I didn't catch you seconded that public hearing.
Uh, Tom did.
I second.
I need to get the minutes right.
And for that sidewalk, best to map out the corners of it.
Could just. Greenhouse? Yeah, that'd be great.
Or somebody. Put a bucket there or something.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know, so.
Yeah.
Well, that gets advertised and you may have some of your neighbors and stuff that show up too, which is good, it's a question, sure, right.
Okay, very impressed.
Anything else?
So we don't have to submit anything to be for the fourth. It's all, it's just the noted notifications I can send down.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's the same time as this?
Uh, it will be seven o'clock on the fourth.
Well, thank you guys, thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Sure. So chief, are you here to listen to our partial disarray or just, uh, sit in or? Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, Sam, do you have anything for us?
I don't have anything else for this time.
Okay.
Just, uh, for the notes, I am still finishing up, chief, so I am working on putting those changes in that we talked about at the workshop.
Yes.
Hope to finish those this week and get them out to everybody.
That'd be fantastic.
Was hoping to get them done around the holidays, but it's just got swamped.
No, no worries.
I want to get them out so you guys can review them. We have motion again?
You're welcome, thank you.